Good evening. The October 24th meeting of the Evanston City Council will come to order, but the clerk, please take the roll.
Counselor Member Reed?
Here.
Counselor Member Hara Garis?
Here.
Counselor Member Kelly?
Here.
Counselor Member Harris?
Here.
Counselor Member Wen?
Here.
Counselor Member Nuisma?
Here.
Counselor Member Burns? Counselor Member Burns? He'll be here. Counselor Member Sephardin?
Here.
Counselor Member Revell?
Here. Here.
We have a quorum present and are prepared to do our work. We begin this evening with a public hearing on the proposed 2023 budget pursuant to the Illinois compiled statutes and Section 1-11-5 of the city code. The Evanston City Council is conducting a public hearing today to consider the fiscal year 2023 proposed budget document. The purpose of this hearing is to allow for public input on the proposed budget document. Staff has presented an overview of the 2023 proposed budget on October 17th, 2022, and this presentation, along with the proposed budget itself, is available at cityofevanston.org/government/budget. I hereby convene the hearing of the fiscal year 2023 proposed budget presentation open. So we will hear from those who have signed up to give testimony on the budget. Everyone who signed up will be given three minutes to speak. We begin with Eric Passit.
My name is Eric Passit. I am owner of North Shore Apartments and Condos, and I'm also a citizen of the Fourth Ward. And I just wanted to bring one thing, I'm sure everybody's, the council's aware of this, that every time the property taxes are raised, the person who get, the people get hurt the worst are the landlords, and in turn, working people. So the people that you're trying to help through affordable housing are being hurt by proposed increases in property taxes. It, I mean, you know, we still haven't found out the final tally of what our property taxes are going to go up as a landlord, but they are huge. Not even considering this part of it, they're huge. So though, just wanted to make somebody, people aware of that. My, my comment is on the Civic Center itself. I mean, this is a pretty underutilized building as a whole. I mean, how many open rooms are in this building? Quite a few, you know? And the proposed budget talks about $3 million this year, and over the next 10 years, $50 million. That's a huge sum of money, and that's not even talking about if we, if we have to borrow to, to get this money, we're talking 5% to 7%. So that's a huge amount of expenditure over, let's say it's 20 years, because you're not going to get it done, all done in 10 years. If there's a huge portion of vacant, you know, office space in downtown Evanston that would love for City of Evanston to, to rent, if we even, even if you spent a million dollars a year, it'd take you 50 years to spend all the money that's proposed here. Plus, we could turn this into a park, you know, mark this down, turn it into a park. You could sell it. I mean, developers would, would salivate over this kind of property. But that would be a whole nother controversy. You could make it into a park and just knock, and do nothing with it, and, and would, enough said. So, so my proposal is that we find a way to move. I mean, you're talking, again, $3 million this year for windows, just consultants over the first fades, brickwork, and this is not even, I mean, it's an old building. It's going to continue to need more and more upkeep. It's, it's a never-ending cycle. And you could rent turnkey office space that has never ever been used in downtown Evanston. There's a lot of new office space in downtown Evanston that's not been used. So enough said. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Ray Friedman.
Before I start my public, my comments on public hearing, I wanted to know what the purpose and intent of the public hearing, I thought it was to have discussion with residents. I don't think that there was any discussion about the budget for 2023 so far this year. So I thought that this, that's what this is going to be. Why wouldn't a public hearing be a hearing by itself? Why is it the beginning of a council meeting that evidently nobody knows anything about? Nobody up there knows anything about a public hearing for tonight. Stephanie doesn't know anything about it. I didn't get a chance to ask Luke Stowe, I don't know if you knew about a public hearing for, it's, it's properly, it's properly noticed in Chicago Tribune, of course. It's not noticed anywhere else. It's not on the calendar, city calendar? Why is it not on city calendar? Okay, that's, that's ridiculous. All right? And now we're going to talk about the budget. Okay, so today, it appears you're moving forward with a $402 million budget. Exhibit A that I printed out, it says fiscal year 2023 adopted budget summary. How is the budget adopted? Nobody's talked about it. Now all, all of a sudden, it's adopted for $402 million. Really? I see that you followed the letter of the law by posting this in the Tribune, and time and time again, you're not following the spirit of the law, which is to allow the residents to know what's going on in their community, how much money's being spent, okay? Where are monies going? All right? This is, this is, I'm, by the way, it's posted in Chicago Tribune as having a hearing at 6:00, which of course, nobody knew anything about either. I'm sitting here since 6:00. What time is it now? All right? This is crazy. With no discussion with residents about the budget, now, at the end of the year, now you want to have a budget discussion, when, when your form here says this is the adopted budget, 402 million. Okay, so let's talk about your adopted budget. General Assistance Fund, what is that? For $1.3 million. Library Fund is $9 million. I don't get it.
15 seconds.
Library Debt Service Fund is $507 million. As I understand it, our debt service for our bonds are $3 million per year. It says here, $15 million.
Time.
Debt service is $15,800,000. Okay? This is, this is obscene. This is crazy.
Thank you very much.
There's millions of dollars here, and, and a public hearing, a public hearing should not have a time limit, okay?
Thank you very much.
A public hearing is for people to speak their mind. We have had no discussion on the budget.
Thank you very much. We are now going to turn to the, those who signed up.
I'm the only person who's speaking at a public hearing?
We're now going to turn to those who signed up online to participate in the public hearing. These are interspersed on the list in front of me with those who will participate in ordinary public comment later on in the evening, so forgive me if I miss anyone. The first speaker will be Jeff Green, who will be followed by Mary Rosinski, and then Dorian Price. Jeff Green?
Good evening. I'm a member of the Evanston Chapter of Citizens Climate Lobby. I'm here to express our chapter's support for the two sustainability positions requested by Kiera Pratt. Budgeting for the requests, one for a community outreach specialist and the other for a resilient building specialist, is necessary if the city is to meet its CARP goals. Failure to provide funding would result in an unacceptable contraction in the scope of the city's commitment to public sustainability work, environmental justice, community outreach, building emissions reduction, and in its ability to collect, analyze, and report on data whose compilation is required by the Energy and Water Benchmarking Ordinance. CCL urges you to vote in favor of funding the two positions to ensure that CARP is a promise kept. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Mary Rosinski, who will be followed by Dorian Price. Ms. Rosinski, are you able to unmute yourself? Looks like she may not be in the Zoom at this time, so we'll go on to Dorian Price.
Hello, this is Dorian Price and Revy. Let me get back to my notes here. In terms of the budget and reading articles that support and requests of, of people like Ray and others for more community participation, one of the solutions, especially as regard to, oh my God, what's going to happen next to zoning, or what's going to happen next to something else, or what's going to happen in the next disaster, and, oh my God, if we do, do we have enough money to do any or all of the above? Prioritizing things on the basis of what's important, truly important, is super important. And you get the impression, at least I do, and others perhaps, that if residents were listened to more intensely and considerations of their concerns raised earlier, as Ray may be suggesting as well, we would probably come to better conclusions rather sooner on more comprehensive coverage of issues that right now are somewhat competitive in order to help people and have them compete for resources. It's not exactly helping community unity or people's mental, mental and physical well-being. So there is an article written by the Daily Northwestern. Thank you Northwestern, I'm an alumni. And it's about the Q and A of the city manager, Luke Stowe. And so my suggestions after reading that would be find synergies to heal, prosper, and sustain the Evanston community. Deep outreach with a responsive budget across all of Evanston will find current and future synergies, synergies, mind you, synergies, we're cycles right now, for programs, policies, and 2023 budget. Living budgets that prioritize, and this concludes the zoning, living zoning, that prioritize conclusion are nimble to respond or prevent loss, assumed irreparable currently, as has been done in the past, when community well-being is both a reserve and goal. I mean, that's huge to say community well-being can be a source of inspiration and solution and continuing improvement. We wanted to, we wanted to allow the council to have greater say this year in the prioritization and choosing which projects to go forward. It's what Luke said in the interview. So to reinvent a live
15 seconds.
...budget process, thank you, demands trust, Mr. Mayor, to make trust and commitment as good neighbors to succeed as one community. So I would say no webinars. We should be having discussions, as Ray suggests, that are open and easily accessible by all of the residents, not just the majority, which represents not all of the residents as we know for a fact. So anyway, thank you for that, and thank you, Luke, for, thank you, Luke, for your efforts in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you very much. My understanding is Ms. Rosinski is now in the Zoom, and also that Mike Fasilko intended to sign up to speak on the budget, so we'll have Mary Rosinski followed by Mike Fasilko.
Hi, everyone, and thank you very much. I wanted to speak to the budget because I think it's, it's very, it's very bloated, and the time period for public involvement has been shortened so much this year because of many things, as we all know, with the city manager search and all that. And I would like to see more consideration given for public comment. We have too many huge public service projects that have been discussed, well, not discussed, they've been announced, but not discussed. And I think the, we deserve, in records and discussion on any huge public service project. Second of all, the, the, oh, I think that's all I really need to say. I know that Citizens Alliance for a Better Government will be doing a public discussion also to try to aid in educating people that will be coming probably that first week in November. We're trying not to conflict with the city budget, but before discussion, but before too much time has gone on, so that people know what questions to ask. I think we need more information, and that's all I'd like to say for now. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. The final speaker will be Mike Fasilko.
Tina Payden signed up also.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. I didn't know about this. Wasn't in the calendar. Missed it on the agenda. Didn't know I had to set, sign up special for this, so thank you. I also want to thank Mayor Biss for his public comments earlier in the week, last week about, you know, regarding reducing the proposed budget. Really appreciate that. My first question is, where is the $10 million-plus Northwestern University should be contributing to our budget? That issue with Northwestern seems to have come and gone again. You don't hear about it. I'd like to know more about what, what they're going to do, what Northwestern's going to do for us, rather than pay all the property taxes they should be paying for us. And then on the basis of what is necessary in 2013, I just want to run through some items that are in the CIP list. One of my favorites these days is the animal shelter because it's now estimated, as I understand it, as of September, to be a $7.5 million project, not a $6.3 million project, like we were told repeatedly by staff. That should be taken off the list entirely. On page 448 of the budget document, what is a circularity warehouse for the cost of $2.1 million? Don't know what it is, probably shouldn't be a necessity. Someone else mentioned the Civic Center. The council doesn't know what's going to do for the Civic Center, so there shouldn't be a $59 million budget to do things for the Civic Center building until the council knows what they're going to be doing with the building. One step ahead of the other. Why do we need $3.65 million in traffic calming on Oakton Corridor? Don't know what traffic calming is. Probably isn't worth $3.65 million, again, as a necessity in 2023. A lot of these things could happen in a year or two later. $31.7 million for renovations of the Civic Center. Seems you could rebuild that building for $31.7 million, but again, I'm not sure if that's an absolute necessity this year coming here, or if it can wait. For Alderman Nuisma?
15 seconds.
445. Reconsider fuel type of the Service Center North Island Fuel System Replacement for $1.7 million. What exactly is that? I hope it's not fossil fuels.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now I made to understand that Tina Payden's sign up is also for, for the budget hearing. Ms. Payden?
Yes, hi. Good evening. Today, you should not be presenting the budget. Public hearing means questions asked by the citizen, citizens, and answered at the meeting, not at a later date. Everyone should be able to hear the questions and immediate answers. Haithesh was at Counselor Member Kelly's first ward meeting last Thursday and said you would be discussing the budget at the ward meetings. The second ward meeting, the fifth ward meeting, and the eighth ward meetings are all this Thursday. The third ward meeting was rescheduled because it conflicted with the times of the other meetings, and you also have an NU meeting at the same time. The ninth ward meeting is this Wednesday, and there hasn't been a sixth ward meeting. I'm not sure if there was any conversation at the seventh ward meeting because it was a discussion about Northwestern. So so far, you only talked to one ward about the budget, when you said clearly that you were going to have discussions at all of the wards, so people can ask questions and you can give an answer at the same time. In the past, before COVID, the city had question and answer remotely. So the city manager, and I believe Haithesh at the time, and the other appropriate staff were at the city hall recording a meeting, and you had, this was even before COVID, so you were doing a Zoom meeting, and you had the wards, you would discuss the meeting at each ward, and people could ask questions and have a response. I think for fair and transparency, you need to do this appropriately and not share this information today, and have, wait for ward meetings where you can discuss it and people can ask questions and you can give an answer. You have rushed this through, and no one is, knows what you're doing. You're not being fair and not transparent. Thank you, and Black Lives Matter.
Thank you very much. This concludes the public input this evening. Are there members of city council who would like to participate in the hearing? Counselor Member Kelly?
Yes, I agree with what several speakers said about the appropriateness of this being a hearing tonight. I, I'd like to, in order that there is proper notice, I understand it was in a Tribune 10 days ago, but it really should have been on the calendar. So I'd like to, I'd like to have this recessed until a day that's designated just for a hearing, so that there can be, it can be noticed on the calendar, and I think we would have had a lot more people here this evening if it had been better notice for our residents. I understand that legally, we complied because it was buried in the Tribune, but that's not really, I don't think that was appropriate in terms of notifying our Evanston residents, so I'd like to move that this be recessed to a, I think, it'd be nice, in the past, we always had Saturdays, a Saturday session. I think that would be ideal, but at any rate, I'd like to move to have this recessed.
So I think, and Ms. Raga can weigh in, I think you need to, to give us a date that you want it recessed to.
Okay. So I do think a Saturday would be, I know we have a taxation, what's it called, a truth and taxation?
Point of, for point of disinformation in order, I would ask that we not recess this meeting, that we, I think, you know, Counselor Member Wen and others who've been here for, actually, you're starting to dwindle down to one of the few who've been here for a while. Counselor Member Wen and Revell, I'm sure both remember that we have had those Saturday sessions, so I think it makes sense to hold the Saturday session. I just don't think we need to recess in order to do that.
Counselor Member Kelly was in the midst of making a motion. Let's allow her to make-
I'm just asking that you not make that motion.
What's the difference?
That we just hold a Saturday meeting to discuss budget and not recess this public hearing and-
I mean, oh.
It's up to you. You can-
Or to, it would be to continue this meeting onto a Saturday.
Counselor Member Reed is recommending that we adjourn the hearing, as was the plan, and then separately schedule a meeting to be held on a Saturday, which if, which is one thing that a person could do. A different thing a person could do is move to recess this. I think the worst thing a person could do is argue about it for a long time, so-
Okay, so I, either way is fine. Right, okay, so fine, that's fine, we'll go with that, as long as there's no difference, that's fine. So I'd like to, I don't know, I don't have the calendar in front of me, but I, I agree that this wasn't properly noticed, so I would say a week from, I mean, properly, I know it was in a Tribune, but it was not on the calendar, and I know many people didn't see it. So I guess, I don't know-
If I could tell you something real quick, I just, I want to make sure that, is there enough support up here? I'm supportive to hold a session.
It only takes three council members to call for a meeting, so I support it. Counselor Member Burns supports it. Counselor Member Kelly supports it.
Not just because, you know, folks have to be willing to sit through questions and answers on a Saturday, which I don't, I feel like that should be a question in and of itself.
No, Counselor Member Reed is correct about the rules. Once you have got three members who want to hold a meeting, that's something we did last December, you'll remember to discuss violence in the community. It's something that can be done by three members again at this time.
So I welcome thoughts regarding the day.
We can figure that out.
Okay.
So-
Oh, I don't, so we don't have to set the date today? Okay.
Hearing no further discussion, hearing no further discussion, I hereby adjourn this public hearing on the budget. And this brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is my public announcements and proclamations. First of all, you'll notice that I'm sporting a very fashionable sticker this evening, my "I Voted" sticker. I'll be the first to admit that it's kind of easy for me. I work in this building, where early voting is taking place. It may not be as convenient for every member of the community, but early voting is taking place on the first, the ground floor of the Civic Center in Room G300 every day up until the day before the election, which is to say up until Monday, November 7th. Hours vary from day to day. You can find them certainly on the county clerk's website, but every single day, there's, there's a number of early voting hours up through November 7th. Election day is November 8th. Just want to, in the strongest possible terms, urge every member of our community to make sure their voice is heard in this critical election. And now I have a proclamation I want to share with the community celebrating the 140th, you heard me right, 140th anniversary of Second Baptist Church. So the proclamation reads as follows.[1577.21][1577.21](APPLAUSE). I just hope you save some applause for after the proclamation's read, too. Whereas Second Baptist Church, the first black Baptist church organized in Evanston, was established on November 17th, 1882, and whereas 20 charter members met in a room over the post office that was located on Davis Street between Chicago and Orington Avenues, and whereas the group consisted of 10 former members of the predominantly white First Baptist Church and 10 other residents, and whereas Reverend S.T. Clanton, a student of the Baptist Union Theological Seminary in Morgan Park, Illinois, was the organizing pastor, and whereas construction at its current building at 1717 Benson Street began in 1912 and was dedicated in December of 1915 as the congregated, commemorate, congregation commemorated its 33rd anniversary, and whereas more than 100 ministers have been trained, ordained, and served in venues across the United States and globally, and whereas Second Baptist Church is known for its powerful preaching, excellent musical ministry, wide-ranging missionary work, and a revitalized congregation that became even more progressive and community-minded in the 1970s, now therefore I, Daniel, Mayor of the City of Evanston, do hereby proclaim November 13th, 2022, as Second Baptist Church Day in the City of Evanston, and wish to recognize and honor the significance of the observance of this 140th anniversary. Congratulations, and I know that Reverend Dr. Michael Neighbors is here to accept this. If we could all give Pastor Neighbors a big hand, I would appreciate it.[1670.01][1670.01](APPLAUSE).
To Mayor Biss and members of the city council, on behalf of Second Baptist Church, 140 years of service and ministry to the Evanston community, I am deeply humbled and proud to receive this proclamation. The reason why this place is not filled with Second Baptist folk is because I wanted it to be a surprise as we celebrate on November 13th, the actual day of 140 years together. So you all are going to have to do me a favor. Please don't tell anybody.[1756.15][1756.15](LAUGHTER). I know that's going to be very, very difficult, but we are very, very grateful for the service that we continue to try to provide to the community, working in interfaith venues as well as working with other social and civic-minded and community organizations. We're grateful for this opportunity, and thank you very much. We appreciate it.[1778.33][1778.33](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, and congratulations. Your secret is safe with us. Counselor Member Harris?
Well, I don't know. As a trustee, I now know (LAUGHTER) of the church, but I just wanted to say congratulations under the leadership- of the church, but I just wanted to say congratulations under the leadership of Dr. Neighbors. We have been a very thriving church and a very faithful church, so I appreciate your leadership, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Uh, that concludes my announcements and proclamations. The next item on the agenda is the city manager's public announcements.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, Clerk Mendoza. I am pleased to share tonight that we have a leadership team from Evanston Cradle to Career to present a short presentation, welcome.
Good evening, thanks for the opportunity to speak to you today. Uh, I'm Craig Lynch, CEO of Youth and Opportunity United, uh, here with Saul Anderson and, uh, the rest of the team from Cradle to Career. We heard loud and clear the need for Cradle to be more responsive and more transparent. Acknowledging that collective impact work is extremely difficult and challenging, uh, there have been some signs of progress. And so we're here today to report on, uh, progress and results across four key areas. Leadership and strategic planning, um, partnering with the city, advancing systems change, and building community leaders. So on the leadership and strategic planning front, uh, we are currently in the middle of a nationwide search for a new leadership for Cradle to Career. We've partnered with the Alma Group, which was the group that also led the search for Evanston Township High School. So it's a really inclusive process that has equity at the core, so we're really, uh, excited about the potential for, uh, new leadership that's going to really support Cradle to Career's efforts and also, uh, support the community. We've completed a highly strategic, a highly inclusive strategic planning process to ensure that Evanston's Cradle to Career strategic direction was informed by the community. We've had evening listening sessions with community members for input, so we feel pretty good about, um, our ability to look to the future and really, um, focus on collective impact work across the community. We also brought in a nationally recognized expert in collective impact to really take a look at our structure, take a look at our plans and process, and give us, uh, give us feedback on things that we can do to strengthen our efforts. Uh, and based on, based on that, uh, assessment and also, uh, some partner work, we developed, uh, three clear areas of focus, because one of the big findings from our work was that we were stretched a little too thin. And collective impact work is really challenging when you try to tackle too many fronts at once. So this strategic focus has developed into three clear areas. Kindergarten readiness, starting at birth, ensuring our young and young adults, our youth and young adults on a path to a livable wage and career. And addressing the social determinants of health as outlined in the E Plan, with an emphasis on Black and Brown residents, particularly in the 5th Ward. So those areas of focus are going to spawn lots of initiatives and projects, but we feel pretty good that those are three very important areas for us to really, uh, advance our, um, systems change efforts and collective impact across the community. In terms of partnering with the city, we think we've tried to be a really strong partner to amplify the city's own efforts, to be more responsive and engaged with the community. So some highlights, uh, on that front, uh, we facilitated and supported, uh, at least at current count, five data walks, where we've, uh, given community members a chance to view the E Plan data and had really robust, uh, discussion. And also that work has also just spawned, I think, some, just fresh thinking about ways in which we can better support, uh, better support the community. We've strengthened our crisis response efforts, so the collective, which is a subgroup that was spawned by Cradle, uh, nine youth-serving organizations, we've developed a crisis response team, so when there is a tragedy that affects our young people, that group pulls together people that can go, um, and provide direct support, mental health supports and triage to, uh, the young people and community in need. We've been a strong supporter of My City, Your City, Our City, which I'm sure everyone here knows about, um, really strong, um, violence mitigation efforts and providing a really supportive place for our young people to, um, to thrive and just, just be young people. So we've really, um, thrown our efforts behind, making sure that that initiative has been successful. Partnering with the Mayor's Employment Advisory Council around workforce development, and also, um, supporting community coffees, which has been a platform for a lot of, for many city officials to come and talk directly to, uh, residents in the community. So we feel pretty good, there's much, much more work to do, and again, as I mentioned, collective impact work is super, super difficult. But we're getting ourselves set up to start to, um, move some of the big rocks, which will admittedly take, take years for us to do, uh, but we're excited about the future. And now I turn it over to my colleague Saul to talk about, uh, some efforts across a couple of other fronts.
Thank you, Craig. Uh, thank you to City Manager Stowe for his time on the agenda and to the entire council. Saul Anderson from the Evanston Community Foundation. I just wanted to talk about a few of the other things that we're really jumping into, uh, with the Cradle to Career initiative. So, uh, first of all, you know, Cradle to Career is a neighborhood network coordinator for the United Way of Metropolitan Chicago. And through that work, we are distributing over $175,000 to collaborations of our partners, uh, in the community. Some of the things we're jumping in on that, uh, one of the big ones is the, the, the create, supporting the expansion of the Savings for Success Program, uh, which is actually a partnership between Cradle to Career, uh, along with the, uh, with ECF and the YWCA of Evanston and North Shore, a program designed to seed 529 accounts, post-secondary education savings accounts, uh, eventually for every kindergarten student in Evanston. So we're really proud of that expansion. Uh, we are also working with both school districts currently, uh, as many of you know, uh, the USDA dropped the free lunch oper- availability for all, we know that a number of our students in our community who are not free lunch or reduced lunch, but maybe full pay lunch can't actually afford the full cost of lunch, um, despite, you know, even when they can't qualify. So we're working with both school districts, uh, to ensure that no child will have to miss lunch or miss a meal at school, um, because they can't afford the cost of, of a school meal. We're also working to create a Child and Family Resource Center, uh, Resource Hub for families with young children in the 5th Ward. I think the biggest piece of our work to this point has been, um, the, our building of community leaders. I think the two kind of crown jewels in Evanston Cradle to Career's work have always been the Advocates for Action Program, um, which gives voice to community members, uh, who are too often unheard as they develop leadership skills and build their capacity to lead, uh, to serve Evanston, excuse me. Um, and our student advocates who are, um, give voice to critical student perspectives. Uh, they, they hosted an annual equity summit this year that allows students employed through the Mayor's Summer Youth Employment Program to come together and discuss the challenges of equity of, in our community. Also, I wanted to, to make a note that, uh, the student advocates will be partnering with the Evanston Youth Advisory Council to host a town hall here in Evanston City Council Chambers, uh, November 1st at 6:00 PM, so they'll be sitting in all of your seats. Um, so excited to see that come about as well. And also our community building grants are a big piece of this work, so we give community members an opportunity to give back to their neighborhoods, um, um, to build, in, in building skills, so this is a work that we do through Advocates for Action. So we had a high school junior who created a, an event for 75 middle school students of color to work with diverse groups of professionals to explore careers in culinary arts, technology, uh, writing, engineering, engineering, advocacy, and dance. Um, also out of this program, there's developed the, uh, Hope on Hovland Program, which we got together, a community that had struggled with violence to meet their neighbors and to share resources and just to get to know one another. And ECF has been really intentional about working with Evanston Cradle to Career to make sure that these resources that are being distributed in the community are additive to some of the community work that we're doing. Uh, and I think a great example of this, who we'll bring up now, is Candy Corbins, uh, who is a, a member of the Advocates for Action Team, um, was a community building grant recipient, is now actually a grant recipient of the Evanston Community Foundation. Somebody invite- Somebody didn't mute. So I'm going to invite Candy up to just talk a little bit about her experience as an advocate for action and how she's growing her work in community.
Good evening, everybody. As you said before, I am Candy Corbins. I am owner of iCandy Hair Studio, Studio on Central Street, this is my councilperson. Um, and I am also owner of iCandy Academy and I'm an advocate for action. I'm a third generation hair care professional here in Evanston, I was born and raised here. My grandfather opened a barber shop in 1962 and my mom still currently has that barber shop, which is located on Dodge in Evanston. And, um, this is where I got my passion for community and for community service. Um, I don't know if you guys know, but a lot of resources flow through barber shops and hair salons, right? Because we have lots of different kinds of people all meeting in the same place. So this is an opportunity for resources to be shared and for knowledge to be shared. So, um, I began my journey with, um, Cradle to Career in 2018 by way of the community building grants through the Advocates for Action. Um, I just was in my chair talking to one of the clients who came in, again, that's, that sharing of knowledge, and she was telling me how she had won a grant and started a foundation. And I was like, oh my God, you know, I have all these kids coming in here and I would love to use my craft in order to try to make this a better place for us all. So I applied for the grant and we did a, um, we called it Paint Your Puffs. So we invited 20, um, young people in to talk about what it's like to have natural hair and what it feels like, uh, and what it feels like to have natural hair and be in the minority, um, in Evanston. And so we had 20 people sign up and we had a really fun time. And so I just reached out to, um, the Evanston Community Foundation right before the pandemic and I said, how can I expand on this? How can I make this something that I can help more children with and, you know, make this community, make this programming bigger in the community? And so, um, so currently I am teaching classes at Fleetwood Jordan, I have Mondays and Wednesdays at Robert Crown, I have 55 students that are currently signed up and we do 90 minutes at both locations on Mondays and Wednesdays. And I'm also at ETHS on Thursdays for the Natural Hair Don't Care Program. This is what it's all about, right? This is why I wanted to be an advocate for action, because this is, I can use my gift. Like, some people might think, oh, well, you're just a hairstylist, like, what do you have to offer? But, you know, this is my way of showing people soft skills. I have young people who come in who don't even know how to look people in the eye. We're learning all kinds of transferable skills that they can use in other places. And I'm not the only person who's doing this, right? All of my other advocates are doing the same thing. We were able to give out 44 community building grants that have forged leadership qualities in all of the grantees that have come, so they all have the potential to do things like this. We do our Saturday morning coffees, which some of you have been, um, guests on already. And we also have the Data Walk, which is inspired by, um, uh, also you guys each have one of the, uh, two things in front of you, those are just, um, a reminder about the community coffees. And then the Data Walk inspired that history of the 5th Ward. And so these are just some of the things that we do, um, as Advocates for Action in Evanston. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Uh, the next item on our agenda is communications from the city clerk.
So we had a few email, um, public comment, everyone has received those. One is from, um, Elvinson Live TV, um, which you guys have got those. And then we have a list of people who emailed for, um, support for the Welcome Center. Jesus Vega, um, Nazaria de Jesus, Diego Reyes, Cynthia Lara, Daniel Herakaris, Rebecca Mendoza, Sergio Hernandez, and Alejandra Ibanez. And those emails are in your inboxes.
Thank you very much. This brings us to public comment. This eve will begin as always with those who signed up in person to speak in person. Uh, everyone this evening will be given three minutes. Uh, the first speaker is Ronald O'Neil.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Ronald O'Neil, I'm the general counsel for IHC Construction Companies LLC. We were awarded a contract to build your 1909 raw water intake replacement project. And, um, I think you all pretty much know the background and the facts, I've spoken to some of you all in the previous, um, committee meeting. So I'm just going to keep this brief. We would like an opportunity to cure the judge's ruling, um, in this matter. We believe that we can do it. We believe that we should be given the opportunity to do it. We were the lowest qualified bidder by $2.5 million. In my world, that's still real money. And we believe that the, the taxpayers of Evanston and the communities that this project will serve, because it's not just Evanston, would be well-served by allowing IHC to go forward with this project. We can fix this problem. If you choose not to allow us to cure it, if that's the decision that you make, then we would like an opportunity to rebid the project. You're going to hear from staff, some of you have already heard from staff about the timing issues. This ruling came from the judge on September 26th. If IIPA required 45-day advertising period, if it had been rebid right away, we, we, we would have been well before the deadlines that your financing calls for. So we think it's fair and reasonable for us to request, since we were the lowest qualified bidder, for us to be given an opportunity to cure or to rebid. It serves us, it serves the City of Evanston, and it serves its citizens that it, this project will serve. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Russell Ginn.
Thank you, councilmembers, uh, for the opportunity to speak tonight. Uh, just following up, uh, my name is Russell Ginn, I'm the vice president, uh, in charge of all the estimating at IHC Construction. And, uh, so I was responsible for putting the bid together that, uh, we were, uh, low on responsive on. And I just wanted to hit on a couple, uh, a couple of facts through the bidding process that we, uh, we think are kind of pertinent to this, this whole process. And, uh, the whole, uh, the whole, uh, consensus around the judge's, uh, decision back a month and a half ago was, uh, was around a statement that basically stated that the qualifications of, uh, the marine contractor on the project needed to have 10 years of experience on the Great Lakes. And, uh, the two contractors that bid the job, one was Ballard and one was Global, they both bid to us as subcontractors for the project. And Ballard also presented a, uh, proposal to you folks for, as a general contractor. At bid time, when we turned our bid in, uh, uh, Global Construction was considerably lower than Ballard on a subcontracting, uh, portion of the work. Uh, that's why we chose Global and, and went forward with their proposal. Uh, we felt that we met the qualifications at bid time. Kind of a note, there, there were no qualifications to be submitted at bid time. Uh, so we looked at that and all of that documentation to show your qualifications was actually required to be done after the bid was turned in. So there was nothing that said at bid time whether you were a responsive bidder or not based upon those qualifications. So with that being said, I think it is, it's imperative that we get, be given an opportunity to address any qual- uh, qualification concerns that staff may have with our subcontractors. We believe that's a, a fair and reasonable thing to go forward with and, uh, we would appreciate your, uh, your thoughts, uh, towards that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Dave Rock.
Good evening. I'm Dave Rock, I'm the president of IHC. Uh, I have been doing civil contracting in Northern Illinois for 40 years and I've seen a lot of things. I've seen bid protest, I've been low bidder, I've been, I've, I've seen a lot. We're a low bidder on this job. And at the end of the day, uh, I think your council will tell you that there was an opportunity to work with both my firm and, and Ballard in terms of, of basically answering questions they had with regard to our bid. We did that, you awarded us the job. In what I would call a somewhat unprecedented situation, the disgruntled second-place bidder filed a temporary restraining order. Okay? Which we have, have, was caught a little bit off guard, candidly, that the circuit court heard it, and, and they did. So they, they have a ruling that says that they found something that Evanston staff said you can move forward with this, this circuit court judge says, no, I got a problem with this. I think you owe us an opportunity, I think you should want to owe us the opportunity to remedy that. I can remedy that, I will tell you tonight, I can remedy that. What's in it for you? It's two things. One, we're $2.5 million low. You know, you, you are all, uh, officials responsible for public money. Uh, I've heard talk tonight about money and at the end of the day, $2.5 million is $2.5 million. The second thing is affirmative action. I look around and, and I, I've heard a lot of positive things tonight with regard to affirmative action. You set a goal on this job of 17% participation, we met it. We took you seriously and said, this is important. We took you seriously and said, this is important, and we're going to go out and make sure that the bid that we submit meets your desire, your request. The disgruntled second-place bidder didn't give me any, or 2%, or half percent, or something nominal. I won't comment any further on that. In the world that I live in, which is building public works, I've never seen go around the low guy that met your goal to the second-place guy that didn't meet your goal. I would ask you to contemplate that. I want the job. I'm the right guy to build the job. Your staff reviewed us, recommended. Admittedly, we got a bump in the road here, but I haven't been given the chance. I remedied what your staff asked us for, and that was good enough. Now I have a circuit clerk judge, and it's very unique. I've never seen it before, but give me that opportunity. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Letitia Barge.
Good evening. First, I'd like to thank Mayor Bis, because when I met him, he was campaigning. He told me that he would be held accountable, and so far, he has worked to be held accountable. I'm 73 years old. I was born here in Evanston. At one time, there were four generations of my family. I am the last one left because of no affordable housing. The last time I spoke before this council was in 215. Affordable housing. A lot of the people have died since then. We're talking about reparations of $25,000 to people to fix up their houses. What about people like me? I'm 73 years old. I will never get reparations. What about giving the seniors in Evanston that are over a certain age $5,000 cash reparation? Let them go on and live their lives the way that they want to. The program, the way it's set up, is not affordable. The abandoned housing on Jackson and Emerson, if it had been in any other ward, it would have been torn down. It's been abandoned for years and boarded up. You've got squatters in there. You've got drug deals going on, and you've got prostitution. You know what I'm talking about. Take a ride by there. Half a block of Emerson from Wesley, halfway down Jackson. It wouldn't happen in any other ward but the Fifth Ward. Thank God for our new chief. She has a vested interest here in Evanston. I do not like being policed by people that don't live in the community, come in here and police us, and they're taking money outside of the community. Make the housing so affordable that our police department can live in the city where they work. Any other city? When you wrote out the program in 2002 under JW Terry, Emergency Assistance Services, we would have been prepared. This is the first pandemic that I have not worked because I retired. When I met Fauci, he had black hair. I am 73 years old. There's a Walgreens right here at 2105 Green Bay. Why do I have to go to 7500 Northwestern Avenue to get a Moderna shot because all they have is Pfizer? You did not give Ike any money for this pandemic. Every program that's been ran in the city as far as vaccinations came from the CDC, the state, and the federal government. You need to be ashamed of yourselves. You really do. You're making promises, you're spending money, and you're not doing anything for the people. My last two things. Gilbert Park has direct access from Emerson out to Jackson. There is no lighting. There is drinking there every weekend, drugging there every weekend. There is no lighting in the park. Check it out. My fourth is, one moment here, fund the health department. Don't tell me I'm at risk and I'm high priority, and you didn't give the director any money, and then the pandemic hit, and we got caught with our pants down. It's embarrassing. It's embarrassing. And everybody's looking at the city of Evanston, oh, why are they coming up here to get their shots? I should be able to come to the public health department right here and get vaccinated for COVID. And it's getting ready to jump. It's getting ready to jump. People are going to die because they are not getting vaccinated like they should. And we're going to hold every one of you responsible. God is not blind. He ain't deaf or dumb either.
Thank you very much. That concludes the in-person portion of our public comment. We move now to those who signed up to speak online. The first.
I signed up to speak for public comment, for both. So I wanted to speak for public comment, for city council, and because you didn't have a sheet for your public hearing, I asked Stephanie, where's a separate sheet? Didn't have it.
Well, you're entitled, all that is, I think, factually untrue, but you're certainly entitled to participate in public comments. You have three minutes, Mr. Friedman.
Thank you very much. So first, I want to apologize for my outburst a while ago. I want to thank Claire Kelly for suggesting that we postpone the hearing or continue the hearing. Thanks, Devon. I want to thank Mayor Bis for last week saying that the budget needs to be cut. It does. There's just way, way, way too much spending here. Like I started to say before, but I can say it a little more calm now. I don't understand. So when we discuss, how is it possible that we have $15 million in our debt service? We have $500,000 in debt service for the library. How is it possible to have $15 million in debt service for the year of 2023? I mean, where did that come from? We only have 200, 200 million at 3 million a year. Where'd the 15 million come from? Why do we have 1.7 million for Crown? For Crown Construction? What are we constructing for 1.7 million, is it? For Robert Crown? I don't understand it. There's a bunch of things now that I know we're continuing. I can, I can talk further about it. You know, we have to think about, with recession looming, interest rates climbing, stock market crash pending, job market weak, housing market not looking good either, we have to really look at the, at the budget. And 402 million is just way, way out of line. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Now we move to the online portion of public comment. The first speaker will be Matthew Rooney, who will be followed by Stephen Vick, and then Alejandra Ibanez. Mr. Rooney? Mr. Rooney, are you able to unmute yourself? If not, we can come back to him. Then the next speaker is Stephen Vick, who will be followed by Alejandra Ibanez, and then Darlene Cannon. Mr. Vick?
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me well?
Sure can.
Good evening, Mayor Bis and the city council. My name is Stephen Vick. I'm the executive director of the Infant Welfare Society of Evanston, and we're in the Second Ward, also a co-chair of the Evanston Early Childhood Council. I'm speaking tonight in favor of the Welcome Center at Family Focus. I speak to you as an organization that works very closely with hundreds of immigrant and refugee families in Evanston, as well as Skokie and Niles. I believe that the Welcome Center is critical to support for multiple reasons, but certainly because we have a huge, growing Latino population, certainly. But we also have a French Creole Haitian community. We have a growing Arabic community, Urdu-speaking community. There are many immigrants moving into the Evanston area. And I think the Welcome Center is a critical place for people to get connected, to have access, to have resources. As you know, the Family Focus building holds over a dozen nonprofit organizations. Our organization has been in the Fifth Ward for over 25 years doing early childhood. But it's a true community center, and by opening the doors as a welcoming center to our refugee immigrant population, we're creating the resource and access and information that we know everyone desires and needs. The last thing we want to do in Evanston is to make people feel more isolated, less able to receive services. Those things in the long run cost more money. So by spending the money on the Welcome Center and opening doors to people of different cultures, different backgrounds, different languages, we're going to wind up saving money in the long run for services. I also want to mention that Family Focus has been doing the operation of Welcome Centers across the metropolitan Chicago area, so they're very well-suited to lead this project. And I'm just very hopeful for many of the communities, of community members that we serve, that they will be able to have the access to this Welcome Center. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Alejandra Ibanez, who will be followed by Darlene Cannon, and then Leslie Williams.
Buenas noches. Good evening, city council, Clerk Mendoza, Mayor Bis, neighbors and friends. Can you hear me well?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. My name's Alejandra Ibanez. I reside at 1400 Kirk in the Eighth Ward with my spouse and three children. I am the former co-chair of the city's Racial Equity Committee Commission, currently serve as the executive director of Illin Leonidos, a statewide consortium dedicated to ensuring the equitable response and recovery of the state's Latinx population from COVID-19, and was a member of the Welcoming Evanston Coalition that successfully advocated for the updated welcoming city ordinance. I'm a proud immigrant from Chile and came to this country at the tender age of five during my motherland's military regime. And I wish my family had a welcoming center like the one that we are hoping to open in Evanston. Illinois has a bold and beautiful tradition of welcoming centers, and I can't wait until we extend that tradition into Evanston. Where I have returned to raise my children and put my values of democracy, inclusion, and equity to practice, welcoming centers, like have been shared, provide critical wraparound services and help recently arrived immigrants and refugees navigate the basic human services, many of which, like my family, need as they flee war, poverty, and violence. Immigrants and refugees arrive simply looking to restart their lives. So many come ready to work and be civically involved on day one. And what an amazing opportunity to welcome them and provide them the conditions for them to do so. A vote in support of this welcoming center would be an investment in our city's racial equity journey to build and/or sustain diverse and economically empowered neighbors that will contribute to our city for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Darlene Cannon, who will be followed by Leslie Williams, and then Sonia Herrera.
Thank you. I'm Darlene Cannon, Second Ward. I support SP1 and F1. In regards to the animal shelter, I love animals, and I'm planning on getting another dog myself, perhaps a chocolate lab. I just can't support spending $7.5 million. And that's, and that's then some, because things always go up around here. I'd like to see how we can build a facility at half the cost, thus lessening the burden on the Evanston taxpayers. I'd like to see a vigorous fostering program. Research shows that animals that are fostered are healthier and happier in homes rather than cold, isolated cages. We have many people in this community who'd love to have a pet but can't afford the maintenance of having a pet. If we had a well-established fostering plan, we could help provide many of our residents and elderly that are on fixed income a companion. A14, and I know it's been tabled, but we need, we need and deserve a better resolution to defray financial burden on our middle and low-income residents when sewer lines work is needed. Why should residents be bankrupt by sewer repair that is not, that the sewer lines come in, come off of city property into residential homes? Now, is it time when we should use a lens of equity? We must provide a degree of protection for our residents. And lastly, cut the budget. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Leslie Williams, who will be followed by Sonia Herrera, and then Rosio Mansera.
Good evening, Mayor Bis, City Manager Stowe, and the city council. Two quick things. First of all, I want to echo what Darlene just said about 63 R22, the resolution about limiting the payment of citizens to $15,000 for sewer repair if they earn under $200,000. And the point, I think, is that why should anyone have to pay that? Many other cities around us, including Chicago, pay for such sewer repairs themselves. It's also not as though the owners of the homes are responsible for the deterioration of the sewer line. They probably had little or nothing to do with that. And even $15,000 for someone who earns less than $200,000 a year is a huge financial expense, and I don't think it's fair to expose our residents to that. And once again, as Darlene was saying, if we really do care about equity, if we really do care about keeping a variety of income levels in the city, we should not be requiring people to pay such a huge sum. And one other quick thing I want to mention, I am also very excited about the Welcome Center. I think it's greatly needed. But I would urge Family Focus to consider working with the wonderful organization Latinos in Evanston North Shore, which does many, many fantastic programs for the Spanish-speaking community on a practically zero budget. They had a fantastic Hispanic Heritage Month program about a month ago that was free to the public. They have another fantastic Day of the Dead program coming up on October 29th at the YMCA. And they provide many of the things that I believe the city wants to provide. English classes, bilingual book clubs, entrepreneur programs for the Latino community, a Golden Years program for the Latino community. So again, I would urge Family Focus to work with this wonderful organization to provide more of these programs throughout the city. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Sonia Herrera, who will be followed by Rosio Mansera, and then Ally Harned. Is Ms. Herrera in the Zoom and able to unmute herself? We're not seeing her for now, so we'll move on to the next speaker, who is Rosio Mansera, who will be followed by Ally Harned, and then Carla Sutton.
Hola, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Rosio Mansera. Este, tengo tres, cuatro hijos. Vivo aquí durante mucho, mucho tiempo. Mis hijos son Evanstonias, y yo apoyo al Work and Center, al Centro de Bienvenida. Es muy importante que, que, que todos los latinoamericanos que estamos en Evanston sean totalmente bienvenidos y acoplados a la comunidad de Evanston. Es muy importante, como le repito, hay muchas culturas fuera de Evanston, y tienen muy bonitos centros de bienvenida, y yo siempre me he preguntado por qué nosotros no podemos tener uno. Voy a dar paso para que, para que alguien interprete, por favor.
So she's asking if I can interpret for her. She said, hi, my name is Rosio Mansera. She's here to support the Welcome Center. She has four kids. She's an Evanston resident, and she wants a place where people can feel welcomed. Latinos can feel welcomed, but also other people can feel welcomed, since we do have many cultures here and around our community. And she's always wondered why we didn't have a Welcome Center here in the city of Evanston.
Es una buena oportunidad para que vean realmente nuestras culturas. Son sumamente hermosas y importantes para el futuro de nuestros hijos. Yo siempre he dicho que sería un mejor lugar tenerlo, y por eso estamos hoy esta noche pidiéndoles que consideren de verdad tener ese centro de bienvenida.
She said it's a good opportunity for our children to have a place where they can feel welcomed, and for our families, for our kids to have a place that is welcoming and is a cultural center.
Especialmente cuando buscamos ayuda, lo importante es tener un lugar a donde ir, a donde sentir. a donde sentirse bienvenido, tener nuestros recursos para ayudar a todas las familias que están aquí dentro de Evanston.
She said, "It would be great to have a place where we can go, a place that has resources and a place that can help Evanston families." ¿Está todo, Rosio? Ya se te acabó tu tiempo y vas a decir algo más.
Muchas gracias. And thank you very much, Clerk Mendoza, for the interpretation for those of us whose Spanish is still a work in progress. The next speaker, who like some sort of spy, just magically materialized, hidden behind a rainbow mask, is Ally Harned, who will be followed by Carla Sutton.
Thank you. I made my way here watching on YouTube. So I'm Ally Harned from the 2nd Ward. Good evening, honorable everybody. And I'm speaking tonight in support of the Welcome Center. I think that it's a really fantastic idea, all of the speakers who have spoken before and especially the last one, who has firsthand experience with the need for it. I'm a social worker in District 65, and we have families that are arriving all the time from all over the world. And we want to be able to do everything that we can to welcome them. And we work really hard to try to partner with organizations. Every organization in town is stretched really thin. Every organization in town is sincerely working so hard to help the people who are here and the people who are coming. But we really are stretched thin. So the more, the merrier, I say. Bring them in, have the Family Focus Welcoming Center increase the available resources for our newcomers to Evanston. And I can say firsthand that they already have been helpful, even though they're not officially working with us. Stephanie helped me with a family that was arriving from Colombia, and they were able to come and help. We ended up finding like a miraculous housing situation for this family where they are actually not paying rent and they are housed very securely and beautifully. But Family Focus was like ready to help as much as they could, even before you all vote yes tonight, which I'm sure you're going to do. So I just want to say, vote yes on that. And while I have time, three minutes, this is great. I also want to do an additional pitch, as I've done many times, that we really need more affordable housing in Evanston for these families that are arriving in Evanston, but also for the families that want to stay in Evanston and are having a really hard time maintaining their residence. This miraculous housing situation that we found, the solution that we found was because somebody opened their heart and had a place that had space and they allowed a family to live there. And that's a really beautiful thing. And I have a feeling there's a lot more opportunity for that in Evanston. So if anybody's watching has a room, basement, an apartment, anything coming up for rent, we are looking for tons of housing for District 65 families. And my email's harnedaid@district65.net. I'm always looking for housing for families. So please let me know. I'd really like to find more housing tomorrow. Do I still have time? This is great. If you live in Skokie, vote yes on the referenda. And I can conclude. There's Evanstonians that watch this. All right, thank you very much, everyone vote yes.
Wow. The next speaker is Carla Sutton. I mean, thank you very much. The next speaker is Carla Sutton.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Biss, members of the City Council. Charity begins at home. And as much as I'd like to see those 2.8 million immigrants who have come to America, where was the Welcome Center with the Southern migration? When we came here to Evanston, all we received was redlining, crowdedness. We now can't get help for lead pipes. We now can't get help for small landlords. When is it that we spend the public money to give a church an opportunity to build a building that is not compatible with the community and will take it off the tax rolls? When are you going to think about the people who have been in this community for years, senior citizens, paying taxes, and we get no breaks from the city of Evanston at all? So I think before you start funding all of these plans with taxpayers' money, you should have some other consideration about having some plans and programs to meet the needs of existing senior homeowners and small landlords in the city. I cannot approve of any money going to these projects that you're thinking about contributing to this evening, like a Welcome Center, money for Robert Crown. To me, that is just throwing good money onto bad. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll now return to those who were unable to unmute, beginning with Matthew Rooney. Are you able to unmute yourself, Mr. Rooney? Mr. Rooney, are you able to unmute yourself? If not, perhaps while he continues to try. Is Sonia Herrera in the Zoom? It looks like she is not.
I was on the list.
Ah, well, we didn't... Again, you're entitled to speak. So just for clarity's purposes, you signed up, Mr. Vasilko, and then indicated that that sign up was meant to count toward the budget hearing. In any case, public comment continues. So with three minutes, Mike Vasilko.
Apologies. I certainly was confused about the process. But thank you. So I'm focusing entirely on CARP. I'm 90% in support of the CARP presentation you're about to receive. I'm 100% in support of Cara Pratt, who works almost independently and needs a lot more help than she's getting from council, a lot more help in regards to funding. You know, there's a couple of million dollars at most scattered about, a million of which is for a pilot program referred to as a one-stop shop for funding home rehab projects. It's a pilot program. It involves an audit of individuals' homes. Some homes have already been targeted, some have not. So there's a little bit of bureaucracy about it that I'm really not a fan of. And the amount of money is miniscule compared to the entire budget or compared to the need, I should say. The other thing about that pilot program I'm uncomfortable about is the involvement of a for-profit contractor, Evanston Development Corporation. And if I understand correctly, they have negotiated or are negotiating like $100,000 fee for their group. And, you know, plus the fact that they're put forward as a contractor for any of these projects. So I don't know how that happened. I love the fact that these other two groups are involved from a national level, but I'm very uncomfortable with Evanston Development Cooperative just being assigned that slot as the main contact. So I've been advocating, as you know, for like $25 million a year for a program that's much simpler in the way it could be developed. I circulated my information to you. How does that money become available to you? Mentioned during the other public comment that there's at least $100 million of programs that are not necessary in 2023. So I think you have to examine what is really a necessary project to spend hundreds of millions of dollars on that could be curtailed or put off for a year or two.
15 seconds.
Devote some of that money, a quarter of that $100 million to some form, a different form of home improvements that relate to the taking out fossil fuel for heating and fossil fuel for gas in your automobiles. So I encourage you to really cut back on the budget and put money, more money into Cara's programs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. My understanding is that Matt Rooney has now been able to unmute himself. Mr. Rooney?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I actually put myself on this list regarding items A17 and 18 because Director Thompson said she might want me to field some questions from the City Council. If there are any questions when you get to those items. So I really have nothing to say other than I would ask you to pass those two resolutions in which can assure supports. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes public comment.
No, Mayor, Mayor, I would like to speak also. This is Tina Payden.
All right. So I guess just to clarify, a variety of people kind of...
Let the other people speak, Mayor.
That's cool. A variety of people signed up once in lieu of signing up twice. All of you who are in that situation will be given the opportunity to participate in public comment. So next is Tina Payden with three minutes.
Thank you. I'm not opposed to a welcoming center. What I am opposed to is your discrepancies when it comes to small landlords. Now, you put $500,000 aside supposedly to help small landlords, which is not even going to be any distribution of any money till next year. And I certainly won't see any of how things are going now. But always when we're asking for something, then we hear crickets. But I have no problem listening to many of you on this phone or on this line or speaking at public comment calling me for an apartment to house people from Evanston and now people that have come from overseas. There's no help for Evanston residents? Maybe if the mayor and connections paid me the money that was promised and owed to me for damages and lost rent, that I could work with housing Evanston families and new families. But no, I still am waiting for the mayor to call me since December of last year. My incident happened over a year ago, and I don't have any response. Also, what kind of fines does the city get when they don't follow protocol? So Agenda Item D1 and Agenda Item A6 about the trees. On August 6th, a city parkway tree fell on a citizen's car. Not one car, but two cars. And she called numerous times saying that the tree was dangerous. So you're trying to say that we, as citizens, somehow we have to follow all these rules. But when that tree that was lifted with a crane, and I was there and witnessed it and took pictures, somehow the city is not responsible or held to the same standards as you're trying to push on us. This is not fair, and you're not following your own rules. Black lives matter all the time, not sometimes.
Thank you very much. That concludes public comment for the evening. And we now move to Special Orders of Business, of which there is one. Would someone care to make a motion regarding Item SP1?
Sir Mayor, I move Item SP1, the Climate Action and Resilience Plan Implementation Update.
Councilmember Nusma moves that we accept and place on file the update on implementation of the Climate Action and Resilience Plan. Councilmember Revel seconds. We begin with a presentation from Ms. Pratt.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Biss, City Manager Stowe, Clerk Mendoza, and members of City Council. My name is Cara Pratt. I'm the Sustainability and Resilience Coordinator for the city of Evanston. This evening, I'll be presenting our 2021 greenhouse gas emissions inventory, progress to date on our 2022 CARP implementation action agenda, and plans for 2023 and beyond. Thank you. So we'll get started right with progress to date since our baseline year of 2005. Community-wide, we have reduced our carbon footprint by just over 38% as of December 2021. So this is our 2021 greenhouse gas emissions inventory progress. This continued decline is mostly attributable to the purchase of renewable energy certificates, or RECs, on behalf of all accounts eligible for community choice aggregation in the city of Evanston. Calculations for 2021 also demonstrated a steep decline in the impact of vehicle miles traveled as CMAP provided data using an updated methodology this year. I'll also note that 2020 and 2021 could be deemed to be anomalous years due to the COVID-19 pandemic. I've included in this slide our community-wide goals as a reminder. The City Council has committed to reducing 2005 emissions by half by 2025 and by 80% by 2035 in order to reach carbon neutrality by 2050. While the previous slide may look like good news, this graph paints a much more realistic picture. Factoring out the purchase of renewable energy certificates, or RECs, community-wide greenhouse gas emissions would have actually increased by 2% from 2020 to 2021. That's if we had not purchased RECs. The purchase of RECs has been a much-needed crutch, allowing us to make significant progress towards our goals. But one day, we need to walk without this crutch. Extrapolating trends into the future, it looks like we're on track to meet our goals if we continue to purchase RECs. But I'll explain in the next slide why that is misleading. If we had never purchased RECs and don't purchase them in the future, our goals wouldn't be met until after 2070. Our uncertain future is somewhere between these two trend lines on the screen, and there are a lot of unknowns about where exactly we'll end up. One thing we do know is the practice of purchasing RECs cannot continue forever. In order to eventually achieve global carbon neutrality, the Evanston community and other privileged entities cannot rely on third-party renewable energy projects to meet our goals and must invest in projects that result in additionality of renewable energy locally. Furthermore, it is unlikely that the rate of progress can continue with the current allocation of resources. We have to date prioritized low-hanging fruit, the least expensive and easiest interventions. The deep decarbonization needed to sustain progress and to keep our trend lines intact is significantly more expensive than the projects that we've been investing in, like purchasing RECs that we've undertaken so far. Now, I'd like to briefly transition into what I hope is a thought-provoking question and some different compelling data. So as we know, the world is changing rapidly, and I wanted to ask if the city of Evanston is a barrier or a catalyst to this change. In the past, we've been catalysts, installing more EV, public EV charging stations than most peer communities. And we can see the effects with skyrocketing public charging usage after the pandemic. You can see that we've broken records in the past couple months, breaking the 600-kilowatt mark and the 800-kilowatt mark in the span of two weeks. We've also seen a considerable short-term increase in electric vehicle purchases among Evanston residents. If we don't continue to innovate and offer opportunities for EV charging to residents, especially to those without access to a garage, the city may be a barrier to the change residents are seeking. In our decision-making, let's always opt to be a catalyst and not a barrier. With that, let's celebrate some of our biggest catalyzing wins in 2022 so far. We have adopted a climate emergency resolution, allocated ARPA funds to support the one-stop-shop previously mentioned for affordable housing retrofits, adopted code updates including bird-friendly and green building ordinances, approved a new commercial franchise agreement, provided a textile recycling option for residential units, and allocated ARPA funds to support lead pipe replacement. Ongoing projects this year include our municipal fleet rightsizing and electrification plan, our accessible solar program, developing ordinances for reducing single-use bags, the stormwater master planning process, the environmental equity investigation planning and CARP implementation dashboard planning. Still, on our collective to-do list for 2022, are two really big projects that's issuing a request for proposal to finally put solar on the roof of Crown and updating our tree preservation ordinance to expand protection of private trees. Now I'll speed through our plans for 2023. So for those watching, what is highlighted is scheduled for quarter one. And all the items with asterisks are contingent upon the fiscal year 2023 budget passing as is. So within municipal operations, implementing the recommendations of our municipal... as is. So within municipal operations, implementing the recommendations of our municipal fleet rightsizing and electrification plan, which would include both charging infrastructure and the purchase of vehicles in 2023. We've got several projects related to waste circularity and waste management within our municipal operations, as well as reducing chloride use in municipal snow operations and continuing our streetlight LED conversion program. Under Buildings Efficiency, we have a plan to adopt the Illinois Stretch Code once it's ready and available to us, and also begin outreach efforts on building performance standards and banning new natural gas connections eventually. Under Renewable Energy, we plan to implement the Accessible Solar Program, which would allow low-income residents to, for the first time, install solar on their roofs with support from the city. We'd also like to evaluate our community choice aggregation and community solar contracts, which are up for review later in 2023. Under Transportation and Mobility, install public EV charging stations, implement our micro-mobility electric scooter pilot, and expand bike lanes and walkability. Related to zero waste, we have that bag tax that I mentioned, as well as analyzing the franchise agreements, conducting a waste characterization study, a cart tagging pilot to understand our recycling habits, and completing waste circularity strategy guidance. Under Urban Canopy and Green Spaces, we have to implement tree preservation measures, like I mentioned previously, develop the Parks and Green Space Strategic Plan, which is under development right now, complete a tree inventory, and generally to increase the number of trees planted compared to 2022 numbers. Green infrastructure, we've got this stormwater master plan that's been underway for several months, and we hope to implement those recommendations towards the end of 2023. For Health Impacts of Extreme Heat and Emergency Preparedness, as you all know, we just had an emergency preparedness fair this past weekend, which was very successful, and we hope to continue those efforts of educating residents about that and conducting a citizen science campaign in partnership with the Fire Department and Health Department. Under Resilience Regulations and Vulnerable Populations, we have implementing the one-stop-shop for affordable housing retrofits that I hope you all are very familiar with at this point, beginning the Environmental Justice Investigation, launching our Public Environmental Justice GAS map so that people can understand what's in their neighborhoods that's both an asset or a hazard to them, and continue lead pipe And then finally, for 2023 plans, we've got formalizing our community engagement policy so that residents know exactly their opportunities for public engagement and how they can lead and be a part of change in city government. Also, for Implementation Accountability and Partnerships, you've probably heard, this is a really long list so far, and so one of the biggest priorities is hiring a resilient building specialist and community outreach specialist to make this happen. We'd like to complete a public-facing implementation dashboard so residents know how we've done in implementing CARP so far, seeing some of these graphs live on our website to be able to interact with them, renewing an internship program for, again, more staff support, implementing a sustainable business incentive program so that some of this deep decarbonization funding is accessible to our business community, assuring that CARP is adequately addressed in the upcoming comprehensive plan, and finally developing additional revenue sources for the Sustainability Fund. So that's all planned for 2023 with a couple caveats related to the budget. And then my final slide is just, again, a draft three-year implementation plan, which these are quite hard to do with a lot of budget uncertainties and staffing uncertainties, but generally, we would like to really scale up our efforts and start to move away from this crutch of REX. We need to work more with the community, work with our biggest employers, and try to find more opportunities for synergy and collaboration so that we can achieve our shared goals. And with that, I also wanted to recognize Brian Zimmerman, Solid Waste Coordinator, and Matt Cotter, the Chair of the CARP Implementation Task Force, for their support with the data. Those graphs that you saw is a reflection of hundreds of hours of work from everyone over several years to come up with that. And now I'll entertain any questions that anyone has.
Thank you very much. Any discussion from council? We begin with Councilmember Reed.
I maybe flipped my light too early because my main question was answered regarding renewable energy credits, and so I appreciate you breaking that out, you all breaking that out. I wonder, I don't recall seeing this in the budget, was there an estimate of the revenue if we were to pass the bag tax?
No, at this time, we don't have a revenue estimate for that.
Okay. I think we've had this similar presentations over the last year, and I think it just continues to be a wake-up call that, particularly the fact that when you take out renewable energy credits, that our emissions have gone up. What are we really doing here? Do we really care about this issue? Are we just sitting around pretending that we're doing something? So I think it's really a wake-up call that if we actually believe in this stuff, and it's not just a part of the, you know, the zeitgeist and everybody, hoo rah rah, we got to do something about climate change, and it's not just posters and things that we do for fun, we've got to start changing behavior. And at some point, this body here has to take tough votes to require that people change behavior, because in some cases, that is the only way that people will actually change their behavior. And so we've got to start living in our values, and one of the ways that we ensure that people do that is we mandate stuff by law. So hopefully, hopefully, this is an actual wake-up call when we start doing something different, and we start changing behavior and not just buying renewable energy credits. Thank you.
Councilmember Newsma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Cara, for this presentation. And just as a reminder, this presentation in October is what we had said we wanted when we approved the Climate Emergency Resolution in April. And so I think, I hope that we get on a regular schedule of hearing from you every six months. So look forward to hearing back in April how much progress we've made. I think it is time to put some more serious resources behind this initiative. Climate action in Evanston goes back at least to 2008, when the council at that time unanimously approved the first version of a climate action plan in Evanston. The council in 2014 approved the second version of a climate action plan, and the council who was seated in 2018 approved the third version, this CARP Climate Action and Resilience Plan. So we've had unanimous votes on this all along. What we have yet to do is really give, devote the resources to making the serious progress that we need to make. I think we should congratulate ourselves for the progress we've made so far, even if it was with REX. Good for us, but that was low-hanging fruit. Work is going to get harder, and we're not going to get to where we need to go unless we put the resources behind it. So I would say, why are we only adding two people in Cara's department? We should be adding four or five. I'll set the marker a little bit higher so we at least can get those two in the budget for you for next year. I'm fully supportive of that. A couple of just quick questions on some particular items. The solar on Robert Crown, what's our timeline on that?
So I'll be working with the other relevant departments to develop an RFP for that process. There have been many, many internal conversations and back and forth about just Robert Crown or including other municipal buildings, and we've landed on starting with Robert Crown and then expanding in the future as needed.
And once we've proved the model out with Crown, it's easier to replicate at the next set of buildings.
Right.
Great. And then related to solar on rooftops, there's a Department of Energy grant that's available for cities to implement some software to facilitate permitting of rooftop solar projects. Is that something that we might want to consider adding to our 2023 action plan, or is that by enough more than we need to at this point?
That's something that I haven't yet discussed with Sarah Flax. I had discussed with Johanna Knighten briefly in the past, and so I'll talk with Sarah Flax about that, and we can come back and provide an update.
Okay, great. And also, before I yield the floor, emphasize that this is not just a city initiative. The city has a leadership role to play, but we are not going to get where we need to as a community if all the institutions in town and all of the individuals and all the residents in town are on board and moving in the same direction. So there's a really important role for community groups to play, whether that's Citizens Climate Lobby, who we heard from earlier, or Citizens Green of Evanston. We are going to need a lot of partners as we pursue this work, and I think one of the staff positions you're proposing is going to help kind of facilitate those collaborations, which are really important as we, you know, to leverage the resources that already exist in our community. So thank you.
Councilmember Revel, followed by Burns.
Well, thank you, Cara, for a really amazing report there. It's impressive how much we have been able to accomplish, and the fact that you're just you, one person. I mean, you've had staff colleagues who've worked with you on a number of these issues, but putting it all together and being the driving forces, what you've been providing, and we're really, really grateful, really glad that we're going to be giving you at least two new staff people to help with the ambitious plans going forward. The fact that we've made as much progress as we have is it's been really easy because we've had REX, and we haven't, as a council, had to make tough decisions, and we, as individual residents, have not had to change our behavior. We've just been able to cruise along, using as much energy as we always have, and then REX have been the thing that have helped us make the progress we've made. So as my councilmember Newsma just mentioned, it's really, it's not just up to us on the City Council, it's up to the other organizations in the community and up to individual residents who, if you talk to our residents, they agree, you know, climate change is really happening, its impacts are devastating, and we need to do something. So we just, we need to help, everybody needs to step up their game to accomplish the things that you've laid out for us. So looking forward to continuing to work with you and looking forward to your next update.
Councilmember Burns.
Yeah, thank you, Cara, for this update. And this is, this next comment is more so to the wider community and not you. You've done a great job, as did Kumar, really talking up, bringing up what his needs are. But I can't speak for the last administration completely, and maybe the councilmembers who were there then can. But looking at this list, I'm not sure there was a single thing that has come before this body that wasn't approved, just looking at this list, which I think that's a good indication that there is support to advance this work. And I've said this to advocates both in this space but in other spaces, the way these bodies work, you have to get something, get something in front of us that we can react to a vote on. And if we don't support it, then I think that's on this body. But again, looking at this list, and there's some, a lot of, some of this stuff goes back, I think, before this term, but I think everything we've gotten in, this body has gotten in front of them, it's approved. Even the REX probably at some point came up as a discussion that the council approved. So just, you know, know you have that support and keep getting things in front of us so that we can review it and approve it. But this is, this is great work. Thank you.
No one is asking to speak for the first time at this moment, so we go back to Councilmember Reed with three minutes left.
Congratulations that we voted on a lot of things, but just the data showing that, you know, we can pat ourselves on the backs, this body historically, but the actual outcome is that we've increased our carbon output. So it's hard to really feel great about that.
Cara, can you just clarify that on that one slide, just for the record?
Yes.
Point of information.
This one or this one? Which one?
The next one. Oh, either one.
So this clarifies that between 2020 and 2021, we increased our greenhouse gas emissions by 2%, and so the reductions in 2021 have to do mostly with the purchase of REX. So you do see the trend line over time. Even if we hadn't purchased REX, that's what this red line indicates. So red is imagining, looking back into the past, like we'd never bought REX and that we never will. So we would never really meet our goals if that had been past practice. So it's a nuance of celebrating that at the time, those were the best decisions to make, was to purchase REX, but we're getting to the time, as you mentioned, Councilmember Reed, where we can't, we can't in good faith do that and celebrate it anymore. It was the right decision at the time, but we know better now, and we know that we can do different things.
Yeah, thank you. And I'm not looking to be a Debbie Downer today, but I, so, one, I'm curious, the two new positions that I think are very clear that this body's going to support, how are those paid for?
So there's a new revenue source through the newly-created Sustainability Fund, and it's a combination of the infrastructure maintenance fee from ComEd, from the community choice aggregation program, the delta, or the money that's left over from not purchasing REX, and from the wheel tax increase of $5 per wheel tax.
So I just want to note that we can increase the wheel tax even more, and that would still put us in line with some of our neighbors, and so that would provide even more funding. I know the county has moved away from the wheel tax, but I don't think that, I think in part, that it's somewhat disingenuous why they've said they've moved away from it. I think they've moved away from it because of a lawsuit relating to infrastructure funding. But I think for the City of Evanston, it makes sense to maybe have another $5 increase and put us in line with some of our neighbors and to be able to fund more of this work. And that's some of that, you know, tough decisions that we have to make to put up or shut up. I think, so, one, I think, you know, staff and this body being bold with the proposals that we put forward to increase funding for this work will be necessary to moving beyond the REX. And then, secondly, you know, I wonder if we took even more money out of renewable energy credits and actually put that money into doing real things here, if we get more bang for our buck that way, if we continue that practice. And so I would, again, ask staff to be even bolder, be comfortable, to be even bolder than the folks have been in the past with putting forward real proposals that get us to where we need to be, even if they seem like tough decisions that the community may not be enthusiastic about prior to some real education on the issue.
Sorry. Again, no one is requesting to speak for the first time, so we go back to Councilmember Newsma with a minute 50 left.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To Councilmember Burns' question about sources of, or Reed, sorry, about your question about sources of revenue, just as a heads up, we have a pending referral on, I'll call it a carbon fee at this point. Details yet to be, yet to be worked out. When we have something ready to share, that will come to, come to committee and eventually council, because we do need to be looking at ways to do more work and find sources of revenue that we can rely on going forward, not just ARPA. I think there's a lot of grant money available at the state and federal level that we could bring, that we could bring in here, but again, that's kind of hard to rely on. But speaking of state and federal level, I want to make it clear that Evanston is not an island in this climate action. We're, we have been a leader, and I'd like us to continue to be a leader, but state policy, even more so than federal policy, is really allowing us to advance more quickly on some of our goals than we would have been able to even a few years ago, you know, due to some innovative legislation at the state level. So we, do we need to spend $25 million on climate action at the local level? It'd be great if we had that kind of money to spend on this, but there is a lot of stuff happening with the state funding that we can leverage, and, you know, I would love to be able to spend somebody else's money to advance these objectives rather than having the burden fall solely on Evanston taxpayers. So part of what we need to do moving forward is making sure that we are tied into state programs and also federal programs and taking advantage of those funding sources.
No one else is asking to speak, so I'll just- No one else is asking to speak, so I'll just make a few really quick comments. First of all, thank you, Cara, for this presentation, which really was illuminating, I think, but also for all of your work on this issue. It was a one-woman band, which is, you're a great one-woman band, but we'd like to hear a trio at least. I want to make two related comments, really for myself and my colleagues, on the subject of trade-offs. The first is if we care about this work, to the extent that we say we do, I think we have to be prepared to demonstrate that in the trade-offs that we make, for instance, in our budget. I don't think we're in a position to say yes to everything, probably never, certainly not this year. And that means we have to be willing to say no to other things, including other things that we like, that are attractive, in order to make good on our stated values and really important values in the area of climate action and resilience. The second thing is, there, if we make those trade-offs properly, we give Cara the tools that she needs to do her job. That will still leave us needing to make more decisions with more trade-offs in them, because the policy choices that are downstream from this moment are, as have been said by everybody up here, going to ask a lot of people, whether it's, whether we're talking about gas hookups, or plastic bags, or trees on private property, or some of the fees that have been described in this informal conversation. There's, there's, there are hard asks coming up if we're going to get to where we need to go on this issue. And so I would just urge all of us to work closely with Cara. I think we know how this, this place operates, that if something kind of surprising and controversial shows up here without us having really worked through it, talked to our residents about it, thought about what the needs are and what the alternatives are and what the trade-offs look like, then it gets here, and there's a freakout, and it gets held up, and we wait a month or two months or forever. If we want to actually get to yes up here on those hard choices that will not feel unanimous in the community, we're going to have to work closely with you along the way before the item reaches this dais. And I know you're committed to doing that, and I think all of us are going to have to meet you halfway and do that work together. These choices will get harder and harder, but they're just going to get more and more important. So thank you very much for everything you do. This brings us to the consent agenda for the evening. Do folks have items they would like to pull from the consent agenda? Councilmember Kelly, go ahead.
A-14 was tabled, so.
Okay, so A-14 will not appear on tonight's agenda.
I'd also like to pull, I mean, I didn't want to pull A-14, but H-1, A-4, and A-13.
A-4, A-13, and H-1, is that correct, councilmember?
That's correct.
A-6.
A-6? So far, I have A-4, A-6, A-13, and H-1, as well as A-14, which did not make it out of committee tonight. Going once, going twice. Everybody ready?
And, Mr. Mayor, can we please parlay Amazon bills list?
I'm sorry, what's that, councilmember?
Amazon bill list, item A-2.
A-2, got it. Thank you, councilmember. So at this time, I have A-2, A-4, A-6, A-13, A-14, and H-1. Any last additions? This is always the thing I'm worst at, reading the body language here. People are looking really studious, and I can't tell if they're just preparing for what's coming next, or if they're feverishly trying to find something else to pull off the consent agenda. I'm going to go with column A. I would now entertain a motion.
I move the consent agenda minus the items that have been removed.
I will second.
Councilmember Reed moves the consent agenda minus items A-2, A-4, A-6, A-13, A-14, and H-1. Councilmember Newsma seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please take the roll.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Saffron?
Aye.
Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the consent agenda with the six aforesaid removals is passed. Now, councilmember Kelly, would you care to make a motion on item A-2?
I move item A-2, approval of BMO Harris Amazon credit card activity.
Second.
Councilmember Kelly moves approval of BMO Harris Amazon credit card activity. Councilmember, I think it was Nguyen, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please take the roll.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Harris? Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Saffron?
I abstain.
Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and the approval, the BMO Harris Amazon credit card activity is approved. This brings us to item A-4. Councilmember Kelly, would you care to make a motion on item A-4?
Sure. I move item A-4, approval of $500,000 in ARPA funding for Family Focus for a welcoming center.
Second.
Councilmember Kelly moves approval of $500,000 in ARPA funding for a Family Focus welcoming center. Councilmember Harris seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing, councilmember Kelly?
So I want to support this, and I do, I just, and again, I'll put something informally about this, but I do feel that we need to have a coordinator to really, for our social safety net services. I think that we really need to ensure maximum impact from the millions of dollars we spend in many in third parties, some in-house, you know, through, we have the living room, we have connections for the homeless, I could go on and on, trilogy. We have our general and emergency assistance program, we have Cradle to Career, we have My City, Your City internal program, we just, I mean, just, it goes on. And so I really think, in order for us to ensure accountability and impact for our tax dollars, that it, that we really should look at having a coordinator position of these services to ensure that they are put to best use and that they are being accessed, to, you know, access to their maximum. And otherwise, I fear that there's not a lot of accountability and control and, being able to ensure that when we allocate funds, that it's not being repeated somewhere else. So I would like to see that happen, coordinator position. Thank you.
Councilmember Harris.
Having been a former member who was on the board for Family Focus, I'm pretty, I feel confident in the work that they do and how they will support this program. Coordinator positions in any capacity always help make sure the work is done appropriately. But I must go on record to say that I've heard residents say that in Evanston, we need to do better for our residents. So I want to be very clear that I've heard that and share that I've heard that, that we're giving this money, but that we just need to pay attention to our residents in Evanston. Thank you.
Clerk Mendoza.
I just want to say a brief comment on this, because I've been working on it with councilmember Burns and Reed, Herakakis, Newsma, and many of the councilmembers up here. And this is, in fact, a program that will allow us to take care of our Evanston residents and those who are new. Hopefully, we'll bring services, we'll be talking to the community and asking everybody in the community what kind of services they'd like to see on this welcome center, and they will all be able to access it. Do we need somebody there to do SNAP benefit applications, C cap? Do we need someone to help children find clothing? The community will be able to guide this, and this is a great way to share resources with our refugee communities, our immigrant communities, and our historically underserved Black community here in Evanston. And I look forward to us starting to do that, sharing funding, and bringing programs where we can all mutually benefit. I myself benefited a lot from the programs that Family Focus has provided. And I'm here because of that, and I'm here because of Family Focus and the many programs that they house there, from their teen baby nursery, to their teen girls, teen mothers programs, to the many tutoring services. So I look forward to Family Focus continuing to create women like myself and young men who are strong. So hopefully, this funding will help to do that for all of our community service, all our community members. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing no further discussion, oh, councilmember Burns.
Clerk Mendoza, my point is that these are Evanston residents. I think once they, you know, once they get here and, you know, connect with our community and, whether they find housing or not, once they get here, you know, these are Evanston residents or hopefuls, people who would like to live in Evanston and, and lay down roots here. There's also people who are refugees who have been living here already for quite a while, that this will also serve. And I think our recent refugees, but also the existing ones who live here is another constituency, which I hope that we all would, would want to represent, and ensure they have the resources they need to thrive here. What I did want to give Sarah an opportunity to talk about is, what are the next steps after this? So we approve this tonight, and then, then what? And I also mentioned at the, at the last meeting, that I wanted to make sure that, I know we listed them as a potential partner, but the Haitian Congress and some of the other organizations are brought in. I would have liked them to also provide letters of support, which I don't, I did not see in this packet, although I requested it at the last meeting. That being said, I want to make sure that, that we bring them in shortly thereafter passing this, this evening.
Thank you, councilmember Burns. Sarah Flax, interim community development director. There is a, Family Focus is already working on talking to the community even before we approve funding for this, to make sure that they're getting to the people with the services they need, as, as Clerk Mendoza already pointed out. There's a ton of work on this. And there are also a lot of outcomes, because one of the things, the state program that we hope will be the ongoing funding of this requires measures of how many people are served, how many, you know, types of services they get, all that sort of stuff. And we actually have a pretty robust process for measuring outcomes on all of our grant programs. We do this, the Social Services Committee is going to be looking at outcomes, for example, for the funding, the CBG, and the human services funding that we give out every year. And the committees review that, and they look at, are this, you know, are these meeting the needs, are they meeting their goals, and things like that. So we really have a pretty robust process for managing grants that we give out to other organizations. I think there is really quite a bit of accountability. Family Focus has that experience as a regular grantee right now. They're one of our major providers of case management services for everybody in our structure, where we have case management, robust case management services that are specifically designed to help people who have the greatest and most complex needs, access services. Because it's really hard to do it on their own, just going for every single place to find what they need. And the welcoming center does that for our non-native English-speaking residents. And that's what it really just dovetails in with our current strategy and our way of giving out money to try to help our residents most in need. So I think that's an important thing. This is really an expansion of that capacity to serve a group that we haven't been serving as well as we really should be.
What's the Family Focus timeline? So again, after this, what are their next steps?
They are working on getting all this set up, and they, they are going to open as close to January 1st as the welcoming centers they can be. And, you know, that's, we've been working on this for a while, but they're, you know, they run three of these. They're not new at this. They run three different welcoming centers. They've been one of the initial welcoming center providers for the state of Illinois. So they, they know their stuff on this. So they'll be, and they will, they are already in touch with virtually every nonprofit, and I will make sure that they are in touch with the Haitian Congress.
Yeah, I just want to give some indication that, that everybody's been brought, brought in, and this would have been an opportunity for them to, you know, also make a comment and support, or, you know, that even if they wanted to make certain adjustments to it, there's still time to do that. But I just want to make sure that they're, they're brought in.
And they are reaching out actively to figure out which groups are, you know, which immigrant groups are most active and most in need. And they also work with other groups that serve different immigrant groups. That's something that all the different welcome centers do. They work together, because nobody can provide all the services for everybody that is, are needed. And so they work with the other welcoming centers. They also work with the refugee resettlement agencies, all those different organizations, to try to make sure that we're reaching all the people who need our help.
Thank you. That's all, sir.
Councilmember Herakakis.
Sarah just kind of said some of the things I wanted to say, but I think it's so important to have all the services available in one spot. You know, it's hard enough to, if you're a native English speaker, to know where to get all your services, and also where to go to get help. And having kind of this one, one place for them to go that's welcoming and able to, you know, get them in touch with all the other agencies, I think is so important. And I think this is going to be a really important thing for our community.
Seeing no further discussion, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly? Aye. Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Saffron?
Aye.
Councilmember Revelle?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion passes and the funding is approved. This brings us to item A-6. Councilmember Kelly, would you care to make a motion on item A-6?
Sure. I'd like to move item A-6, which is approval of contracts with, oh, no, I'm sorry, approval of contract with Suburban Tree Consortium for the purchase of trees and planting services for fall of 2022.
Second.
Councilmember Kelly moves approval of a contract with Suburban Tree Consortium. Councilmember Newsma, seconds. Beginning discussion with councilmember Harris.
So it's been a month not saying anything, and I'm saying everything tonight. Just wanted to make sure, I attended the wonderful day-to-walk the other day, and there was great discussion about tree canopies and about the fifth ward not having enough trees, and that it being one of the hottest wards in the area. I grew up in the fifth ward and never thought about how hot it was until that information. So I just wanted to know, did we have a plan where these trees were going, making sure that they were distributed appropriately in the city to help with what I just learned?
Good evening, Mayor Bis, members of the council, Clerk Mendoza, City Manager Stowe. To answer your question, yes, we do have somewhat of a list right now of where these trees are going to go. We're going to replace the trees that we've taken down, whether by storm damage or just some kind of unsafe concern to the public. We understand and we know that the fifth ward, along with the second ward, do seem to be lacking a little bit of tree canopy there. We do face some challenges as far as restricted parkway width, but we do have a plan. We do have a plan that we're going to try to do the best that we can in public land to be able to plant those trees and encourage homeowners, which have a lot of, were more available planting sites, to encourage them to put plant trees in their sites as well.
Will we provide funding to help that? Because as you know, in the second and fifth and eighth wards, we may not be able to afford that.
We would come back to the, we can come back to the council, asking for funding in order to provide that. But yes, as of right now, everything that we have is for our parkways, in our parks.
Okay. I'd like to see that map or plan that we have at some point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Reed.
I'll just add my voice. I'd also love to see that map. I think the eighth ward actually, in, in maybe this one case, does have, compared to some other wards, pretty decent canopy coverage. I'd love to see more along Howard Street. But, so I, I'd love to see that map. So thank you, councilmember Harris, for asking for that and for keeping equity at the forefront here. at the forefront here. Purchase of trees and planting services. I also would love to see us, you know, as we go out for this next year, and as your team is maintaining our, our city's infrastructure, generally, look toward more native planting, plantings, whether the trees be native or the other plantings that accompany the trees. Just really love to see more native, attention to native plants and trees. And then, that's it for now. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, would the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Haraqaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the contract is approved. This brings us now to item A13. Councilmember Kelly, would you care to make a motion on item A13?
Sure. I'd like to move A13, report on emergency replacement of two boilers at Noy's Cultural Arts Center by Great Lakes Plumbing and Heating Company.
Second.
Councilmember Kelly moves that we accept and place on file this report describing the emergency replacement of two steam boilers at Noy's. Councilmember Newsma, seconds. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Kelly?
Yeah, I only pulled this because I just want to reiterate what I said in APW, that in an instance like this, I would really expect to see our local firms who can handle this job reached out to. These were phone calls to get some pricing. So, I just ask that going forward, that we always consider local, local companies that could do these jobs, and we have several in town that could also do these. So, not saying they would necessarily get, you know, get it based on pricing, but they might. And so, I'm going to please encourage staff to always, when possible, reach out to local, our local companies. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, would the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Haraqaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the report is accepted and placed on file. This brings us now to item H1.
My apologies, Chair, was A7 not removed from the consent agenda?
Sure don't think so.
Okay.
You can make a motion. Do we reconsider?
No, it's fine.
Okay. In that case, that brings us to item H1. Would someone care to make a motion regarding item H1?
I move item H1, yeah, I move item H1, which is Resolution 68-R-22, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with LEAP concerning the Reimagining Public Safety Committee and low priority 911 calls.
I'll second.
Councilmember Reed moves passage of Resolution 68-R-22. I believe Councilmember Haraqaris, seconds, is that right? For discussion, Councilmember Burns?
Yeah, I wanted to hold this, probably to the next meeting. I've been meeting with Chief Stewart, Chief Paula, Director Ogbo. There's a few different programs being considered, and I think at this point, more confusion than clarity. And, and so, as we seek to find some common ground, I want to hold this so we can continue to meet and figure out next paths.
Councilmember Burns moves to hold item H1. Councilmember Reed, seconds. Hearing no motion to overturn the hold, the hold stands, and this item will appear on the next regular council meeting agenda, which if I have my dates right, is November 14th.
Okay, thank you.
This brings us to call of the wards. Councilmember Reed?
Yeah, just going to announce the council, or council meeting, ward meeting this Thursday at 6:00 PM, I believe. Councilmember Burns and I are having some sort of somewhat joint meeting starting at 7:00, where the budget team will be present to discuss the budget. And then, some I board meeting will start at the normal time at 6:00. We'll talk eighth ward specific stuff, and then we'll have the fifth warders jump on at 7:00, and we'll do a joint budget discussion, and then break from there.
Councilmember Haraqaris?
All right, so, on the 26th, I will be at the Budget Town Hall meeting, the Budget Town Hall meeting in Spanish. And later that day, at 7:30, we'll have a virtual ninth ward meeting. Chief Stewart will be at the meeting to talk to residents, and we'll also have the Evanston Transit Alliance there. And then, in November, on the first, we will, I'll be co-hosting a seventh, sixth, and ninth ward virtual meeting to discuss the budget, and that is at 7:00 PM on November 1st.
Councilmember Kelly?
Sorry. Yeah, many first ward meetings coming up. I'll be holding a meeting on property tax, a discussion on November 3rd. That's a virtual meeting. There, I will also be holding a meeting on public safety with Chief Stewart and Officer Rust on November 16th. Also, a special first ward meeting on pensions. And all this will go out in an email tomorrow. Thank you.
Councilmember Harris?
October 27th will be our first second ward meeting, where Chief Stewart, looks like we have some of all the same people coming to our meetings, but that's amazing. I appreciate that. Chief Stewart and the budget will be discussed. I look forward to seeing not only second ward residents, but whoever would like to attend. Thank you.
Councilmember Kelly with an addendum?
Sorry, I forgot to mention important meeting. This Thursday, October 27th, is the NU City Committee meeting, and that will be virtual. And the discussion on the police and fire pension will be on Tuesday, November 1st, also virtual at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes, I want to invite third ward residents to join with the fourth ward on November 1st, Tuesday, November 1st, at 7:00 PM at Robert Crown to discuss our budget. So, that's third and fourth ward residents, November 1st, 7:00 PM, Robert Crown. And then, my, I want to announce my next office hours are Thursday, November 3rd, as usual, at Brothers' K from 7:30 till 10:00 AM. That's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Newsma?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just reiterating, the fourth ward meeting combined with the third ward, Tuesday, November 1st, 7:00 PM at Robert Crown, primarily focused on the budget. Fourth ward office hours will be Saturday, November 12th. In a break with routine, we're not going to be meeting at a coffee shop. We will instead be meeting at the Evanston Made Pop-Up, which is at 832 Demster Street, local art installations where the Lappin Computer Store used to be. Also, I don't have the date right in front of me, but within the next few weeks, we're going to do a neighborhood meeting on the Masonic Temple redevelopment. So, details will be emailed to the fourth ward email list within the next day or two.
Councilmember Burns?
You know, fifth ward meeting this Thursday, last Thursday of the month, every month. So, please mark your calendar, but we have another, another one coming up this Thursday. We're going to be talking budget and zoning with joining forces for affordable housing. And then, also quickly, just wanted to respond to some concerns about what this resident perceived as a lack of community engagement around some of the projects that we have going on in the fifth ward. Just to go through a quick list, so Church and Darrow is, not only have we had probably two or three neighborhood events about it, we've canvassed the area about it, they're also going through the, the land use commission process, which is, allows for a public hearing for committee members to come in and make comment. And we'll continue to do meetings around the HODC development on Church and Darrow. Jackson and Emerson, we do not own the property yet. We are still going through closing. I talked to our Corporation Council, thinks that should be finished in about two, two or three weeks. Once we actually own the property, then we can start the community engagement process around determining what to do with it. West Evanston Overlay, as I said earlier, this was not, we weren't, we didn't discuss it at the planning and development meeting to modify or change anything. That will happen through the comprehensive process, comprehensive planning process, which is a multi-year effort that will, I'm sure, will allow for as much community engagement as folks can tolerate. Hovland, we just, I think at the last, one of our last meetings authorized the city manager to execute the contract. So, we're not even close to owning that property. But when, again, when we own it, before we do anything, we'll, we'll, we'll go out and, and talk to the community about what they would like to see there. And then Fleetwood, we're actually working with Hirons right now. This council authorized us to move forward with Hirons, a community engagement firm, to talk about Fleetwood, as well as Gibbs Morrison, with the community. I had a meeting with them earlier today. We're working on developing focus groups and working on the survey questions and a nice community dinner to get feedback and a whole, whole bunch of really exciting things that I'll, the community will know more about soon. So, just wanted to go over those, and that's all I have.
Councilmember Sufferton?
No, I'm at my first budget meeting.
Councilmember Revel?
Well, first, I'd like to give a shout out to our fire department for this wildly successful emergency preparedness fair at Robert Crown last weekend. Really, you know, lots and lots of people. It was more than our fire department who were there though, too. We had other staff members tabling and talking, educating residents about all kinds of city programs. I can vouch for the CPR training course. It was really good. So, I, next time that's offered, I really encourage everybody to do that. I hope I never have to use it, but just, it helps to be, helps to be prepared. So, you've heard about November 1st, which is sixth, seventh, and ninth ward budget meeting. And then, on November 3rd, is going to be the first of a series of what I'm calling special topic meetings that are going to be looking, each one at a different aspect of the Northwestern Stadium project to dig into deeper into various aspects of that, of that project. And the first one, on November 3rd, is going to be looking at what are, what are going to be the zoning and other amendments and code amendments that the university is going to be seeking from the city, and, and what are going to be the opportunities for residents to be able to comment and provide input for those decisions. So, that's the, the first of those special topic meetings on November 3rd, 7:00 PM.
That concludes call of the wards for the evening. Councilmember Newsma is recognized to make a motion.
Pursuant to five, Illinois compiled statutes 120/2A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding collective negotiating. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act as set forth in five, ILCS 120/2A, section C2.
Councilmember Newsma moves that we convene into an executive session for the aforementioned purpose. Councilmember Nguyen, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Haraqaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sufferton?
Aye.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
With nine voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and at 9:51 PM, the city council convenes into an executive session to begin immediately in the council member library.